All right, I'd like to reconvene the St. Mary's County Board of Education for Wednesday, August 27th, 2025. We will stand and begin with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And with that, with the suggestion of some of the members of the board, if we could all just take a moment of silence just to remember the tragedy that happened in Minnesota earlier today. Thank you. Okay. And may I have a motion to approve the agenda, please?
I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Dorothy, would you like to second?
Second?
There you go. Okay, we're a little short. We have some vacations. Poor Vanessa broke down on the way here. So Scott, you're flying solo here.
Yeah, yeah. So, oh my gosh. There were so many things to talk about and so many people to recognize and thank for getting us off to a great start this year. We brought back the beginning of school presentation, and that will be done by our chief academic officer, Ms. Katie Cordercracks, and our deputy superintendent, Dr. J.R. Beavers. But I did get to have some fun. I definitely wanted to highlight all three of our high schools. They do their Senior Sunrise. It's a beautiful event. It's a great way for everybody to come together and really set their sights on making 2025, 2026 the most successful year ever. Many of the schools had their photos from the day that they put them out in their smores beginning of this week, and they were really nice. And of course, right up there in the corner is Ms. Dorothy Andrews with Principal Dothard at the Grape Mills High School Senior Sunrise. And that was just really wonderful. So if you're not reading your smore that's coming out from your school, please do. Almost every single principal put in really great, heartwarming pictures of kids in classrooms and teachers and everybody starting off the year just right. Also, if you are on Facebook and you want something really positive on Facebook, and there are positive things to be found on Facebook. The St. Mary's County Sheriff's Office really did a great job this year, and each one of the school-based SROs that we have did like a one and a half minute video introducing themselves, talking about their assignment at their schools, and giving their one little piece of advice for the upcoming school year, whether it be, you know, drive safely, don't procrastinate, be kind to others. They're really wonderful, and they're in a loop. And I liked a whole bunch of them, so hopefully they'll be saved. But please go out and take a look at that. And then we do see our Sheriff Hall is down at George Washington Carver with our new principal, Ms. Rhonda Morgan. And also then we have Deputy Andy Holton, who is at Lexington Park with Scott Serbiak, the transplanted from Benjamin Bannaker principal as well. Just a really great, wonderful opportunity to see that we do have a strong relationship with law enforcement, and as I like to call them, peace officers. They're keepers of the peace, and they really do a great job doing exactly that. The first week of school visits, I did wrap up. Last one was Diner today. Got out to all the schools, got to see everybody, got to put my face in new teachers' classrooms and things like that. I did start off with, you have to have a picture with April Ryan at Esperanza Middle School, my favorite art student turned art teacher turned educator extraordinaire. Principal Kielmeyer with the new counselor Emily Campbell fitting in at Captain Walter Francis Duke. Rachel Soderbergh, this is on day two at Evergreen Elementary School. They got all the kids down there, and they go through the rules of recess, where you can go, where you can't go. And there she is up in the top. She runs all the way to the one end and goes, "This is as far as you can go." And then she runs all the way back to the other end. I mean, it was a lot of fun. That is our new counselor, high school counselor at Grape Mills High School, Riley Spicer. You might remember her as Riley Montgomery. She is now with us, and she is starting off really, really well. Went down and got to share a little bit of her space. Very calming. She's ready to hit the road. That is a picture of my son. Every year, my wife has me find Jake wherever he is in the school and take a first day of school picture. We've been doing that since he was attending the schools way back in the day. And Principal Durenzo, I just wanted to call out specifically Megan Peña Vasquez, who finished all of her certification stuff. She's going through, but she was employed with us as a paraeducator. So she came back to school getting ready for the opening of school, paraeducator, kind of all that other together. And it's like, hey, how about teacher? And she just rolled right into it. When you walked into her classroom, it's beautiful. It's set up. It's as though it's been there forever. It's a really wonderful, and it's a great story about how the deep talent that we have in the school system and how they rise into the next level of position. And she's just going to be fantastic at Hollywood Elementary School. There are still some opportunities available. There's not that many. We still need two middle school science, one middle school English. And I think the middle school English actually isn't even, that's later in the school year. So I don't think it's currently vacant. I think it's in anticipation of a person going out. Some opportunities in special education. We might only have one elementary education. Either way, it's getting really tight. So if you want to work with the school system, you better get your application in and be checking it out because we're going to be fully booked really soon. I have been informed by the people with whom I work that there are more and more conversations going on out in the St. Mary's County about redistricting. And people have a lot of strong opinions, and a lot of times that's not really based on fact. So we've had presentations in the past. We're going to have presentations coming up. But in the meantime, we have set up a website off the SMCPS website, so smcps.org/redistricting that gives all of the information to date. When you land on it, you will see that there's a picture of a building, and that building is not in St. Mary's County Public Schools, because we were talking about we don't want to put any particular school up on the landing page lest somebody think that either they are getting closed or getting moved or getting whatever. So it is there. And there's all the information, not only on the process, but on the teams and on how we're going to be making sure that we, how we're gathering input from every single one of the schools, and how we're making sure that we're keeping parents and students informed. The first meeting will be coming up next month, and that will start with a review of a survey that will go out to everybody in the county. So everybody has the opportunity at the very first blush to give us information, and then that information will be what kind of drives a lot of our work from going out. But there's so much information on that webpage, including the results of the last time St. Mary's County Public Schools redistricted, which was when we opened Captain Walter Francis Duke in 2014, 2015. So it kind of shows you what that looks like. It goes through the policy and the regulations, so everybody can see it. And it has all the boundary information for every single one of the schools and enrollment information and everything like that. So there's a lot on that website. So smcps.org/redistricting. So here we are, two more days, and we will be done with August. August is finishing off beautifully. The weather is delightful. The kids are back in school. It really has been going very well. When we get into this weekend, it is a three-day weekend. Parents, please enjoy your children as much as we have enjoyed them this entire week, and then make sure that they are rested and ready to be at school every single day, present and not tardy. We have a full week that follows after that, and then we have an abbreviated week for fair day. So with that, we have the student member of the board updates. And Ms. Vanessa Lee, I believe she's having car trouble, but she has been very, very busy. She attended the orientation for all of the student members of the board across the entire state of Maryland, learned about policy at the state level, definitely got to know a lot of the other smobs. I guess she won Jeopardy. And most importantly, she has released her very first video, the St. Mary's County Member of the Board Monthly Minute, where she talks a little bit about what her focus is for the year and how to contact her. And so please go to our YouTube channel. The Smob Monthly Minute is there. It's going to be pushed out on Facebook and Instagram and all of our different social media things. It's a great little one-minute video and introduction into our fantastic student member of the board, and kind of gives a little tease for what the rest of the school year is going to all be about. So with that, we listen, empower, aspire, deliver, we lead. SMCPS 2025, 2026, off to a great start.
Okay, no recollections, no public hearing. Any public comment? No. Okay. Then may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move consent of the, approval of the consent agenda, approval of minutes of August 13th, 2025, personnel, teachers, personnel administrative and supervisory, none, Department of Maintenance, Fire Protection, Inspections and Related Services, school bus contracts for the 2025, 2026 school year supplement.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion is carried. We have one action item. We have Dr. Beavers and Mr. Watson with our student debt policy.
You drifted the mouse up.
There you go.
All right. Stephen anticipated my struggles. Thank you, Stephen. So we are here before you today to go through our second reading of the student debt policy. Just to review a couple of things, our purpose is to review our practices related to student debt, student debt collections, and student accountability. The members of our committee are listed there. We do plan on meeting monthly throughout the rest of the school year to work through our regulation, which we have in draft format, and to work through some other logistics related to student debt, student debt management. We have met twice, and again, we'll meet throughout SY26. We came to you for the first reading, I think, at the second meeting in July, July 30th. Last meeting, August 13th, there was public comment. We had no public comment, and we're before you today for the second reading. Since all of this is a brand-new policy, everything is still read. As you will see, as we go through these slides, we did take the board recommendations into consideration and added some of your suggestions and recommendations to the policy, which you'll see tonight. And we're going to focus on those blue words here this evening. So no changes in the title, student debt, no changes on this slide for policy statement, no changes on the next slide, continuation of the policy statement. One small change here, number three, policy statement continued. Efforts shall, instead of may, be made to assist students and families in resolving debts, including providing payment plans or alternative options where feasible to avoid undue hardship.
All right, so here, item four, the school system shall, we changed that from will to shall, follow applicable laws and regulations regarding the collection of school debts, ensuring that collection practices are fair, respectful, and non-discriminatory. For item number five, we changed that, we included, or a payment plan is established, that was brought up, I think, Ms. Washington. So now that reads, students with outstanding debts may be restricted from participating in extracurricular activities or ineligible for other privileges or benefits until debts are resolved or a payment plan has been established. Under definitions of student debt, we struck the word owed and changed it to incurred. And then we kind of defined the student debt piece. So it currently reads, any financial obligation incurred by a student, which is the responsibility of their parent or guardian, to the school system resulting from charges such as meal accounts, lost or damaged technology, lost or damaged school property, fees associated with extracurricular activities, library fines, or other approved charges related to school activities. We didn't have anything for expectations or evaluation, review, and updates. We didn't have anything in, nope, in the policy itself, the statement, student debt.
And those last two slides, sorry, and those last two slides are just the clean version. We're not going to read those to you, but that's just the clean version. If approved this evening, that would be the policy that gets placed into the board talks. And with that, we ask that the Board of Education approve this agenda item as presented.
Josh, do you have any questions?
So the principals of each school have the ability to waive a debt, correct?
They may, yes. And there's other directors of certain departments that also have the ability.
That's what I was going to ask. I was going to ask, you know, does it just stop at the principal? Can they potentially appeal it even further into other departments?
Yeah, so as far as like the appeal process, there is an appeal process, and that's usually a collaboration of potentially the school principal, a director of a certain department, potentially like information technology or curriculum instruction, depending on what that fee may be. And then also depending upon if that fee was accidental or deliberate, all those things are taken into account.
So the policy is flexible, is what you're telling me?
Correct.
Um, I like that you have the word on slide seven, respectful. But I just kind of want a little bit more elaboration on that, you know, because it's about children. So how will the children be approached if they have incurred this debt and they cannot go on a field trip or whatever might happen? Do you have any forethoughts on?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so part of the regulation, we will define notification to students and families of any incurred debt. So that could be anything from phone calls to a postal mail to an email. So students and staff, or excuse me, students and parents will be notified accordingly of any incurred debt. So essentially, any student who walks up to do something where they may be declined to do so should already know that they would have that debt because they would be informed of such.
And how would that be approached with them as a student? You know, because you don't want, like, to me, it's just concerning because you don't want to be like, not berating, I'm not going to say anybody's berating the student. But, so the student, maybe the student doesn't know, and the parent didn't tell them. And they come up. How would that be handled, the situation?
Typically.
I just want to make sure that they're going to be okay and, you know, they're not reprimanded in front of their peers or anything like that.
Yes. Typically, when you are, let's say, as an example, you're purchasing a dance ticket, or you're purchasing a parking pass at a high school. That's usually in a one-on-one situation. As far as a parking pass goes, you have to submit an application, I believe, at most of the high schools or all the high schools, and therefore then you would be notified that your parking pass would be denied because of a debt. And again, if you believe that, you know, this notification is inaccurate or that you don't have a debt, to reach out to a specific person to have that discussion, maybe probably your assistant principal or someone of that nature would be able to have that conversation.
Okay, so it's privately. Normally, they know ahead of time.
Yes.
And it's sensitive materials, and they're not going to...
There's no discussion of why you're on the, so usually if somebody's on the, so if you were trying to buy purchase tickets and you're on the debt list, they'll go through and they'll say simply, you're on the debt list. You're going to have to see whichever principal might be, because all the teacher would see, or all the staff person would ever see is, she just says, I'm sorry, you're on the debt list. You're going to have to go speak to somebody about that. And then it's the administrator and/or the person overseeing that would then have information about the particular debt that they might be carrying. Schools send out an unprecedented amount of notifications to parents and to students about incurred debts. It's usually done quarterly, but it's information that's out there. And the only way you can get on the debt list is you had something assigned to you and you didn't return it. So there, I mean, it's a, there's no like sneaky way to put somebody on the debt list. It's pretty perfunctory. This food debt is the most challenging because by law, we cannot talk to the child about the fact that they're on the debt list or they don't have money. We are to give them the food. And then we have to follow up with the parent to say, your child continues to receive lunch. We can't deny them lunch, but you are accumulating debt as a result of it.
So the child isn't...
The child, the child doesn't see anything. Child goes through.
She or he just walks through, and they're not said anything about food or...
Nope. The years of the cheese sandwich are gone.
Thank goodness.
You can't do an alternative lunch. But by the same, but at the same time, that parent is going to continue to accumulate debt because there is nothing stopping that child from getting a meal every single day, going through the line, and the debt keeps on accumulating because we can't say to the child, you don't have money for it. It's something that really, parents have to, parents need to be involved in their children's life. And if they aren't a free and reduced meal child, they don't get, they need to pay for whatever lunch they're receiving.
No, I mean, I understand.
Yeah, I mean, it's a...
Just sensitive with the children.
Yeah.
Respect.
Yeah, the last thing we want to do is ever make a child feel uncomfortable in that situation. So we'll use all tact necessary to do so.
Okay.
And debt at the elementary level is handled much differently than debt at the middle school level, which is handled much differently than debt at the high school level. At the high school level, yeah, they're young adults, and they know that they've driven their car illegally to school and are getting parking tickets, and they have, and they're not going to get a parking pass because they have uncleared parking tickets. That's amazingly, everybody clears that out at the beginning of the year when they want to get a parking pass. Suddenly, they cover all their, they cover all their debts.
What's the method of contact? I mean, when you reach out to a parent, are you calling them? Are you sending a letter? How are you doing that?
So we're using, we would use multiple and have used multiple modes of communication.
You're not sending it with the child, right?
No, no, no. We have a conversation with the child, yes.
There's really no paper communication that comes from any board.
Well, I was going to say that, it wasn't.
Back in the old days.
Phone message, email, text message.
2020.
And we'll take the opportunity to plug that, just a reminder that FARM's applications, they have a 30-day carryover at the start of the school year. So just because you had it last year doesn't mean you don't have to reapply. So parents out there, make sure that if you are eligible or think you might be eligible, please, please submit your application. There is only a 30-day carryover. A lot of that school lunch debt does start to accrue after the 30 days, because people sometimes don't realize, no matter how much we put it out there, that you do have to reapply.
And they have put it out in back-to-school days flyers, the weekly smore message, and school messengers out to parents. So at that point, we're like, short of going to somebody's house and knocking on the door, you know?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Very much.
My only suggestion is, as part of the regulation for the appeal process, I would possibly also allow the student to initiate the appeal in the event that, you know, you have absent parents or guardians, right? That then that way the student feels that they have a voice to kind of plead their case as to why. And I think that's, I mean...
The resolving debt part is going to have to be very clearly laid out in the regulation so that, especially when we're talking about, you know, hardship and things like that, and/or, you know, how the debt was incurred and what they're responsible for. Absolutely.
Right. So, Mary, do you have anything?
Not much that I have not already said at the previous board meeting when we first discussed this policy. And I understand that there is an outstanding amount of debt that is owed, and the system wants to collect that money. It's owed, and it's the right thing to do. There are some people who do not have the money. They can hardly feed their children. That's why they get free and reduced lunch. So every effort, and you say every effort is made for parents to fill out that form, and if their status changed, their economic status changed, they can fill it out. If they lose their job, if they get a pay cut, whatever. But also, I'm still concerned about number five, that if students have outstanding debt, they may be restricted from participating in extracurricular activities. I don't agree with that because it is the parent's responsibility, not the student's responsibility. Students are minors. It's the parent's responsibility. Some can pay, some cannot. And also, the debt collection, you know, I'll just leave it at that, okay? This is very important policy, and I don't want students to be denied to participate in extracurricular activities because the debt is not paid. A lot of students get their sense of belonging, their sense of connectedness, their sense of belonging to a positive group from participating in these activities. Some students, school is their safe place. This is where they can do that. So I won't belabor the point. So I understand why you want to do this, but I'm also concerned about students having to take the responsibility because a parent cannot or will not pay the debt to be denied extracurricular activities. That's it.
Great. And I think with the number three above, you know, I think at that point then we're relying on, you know, our principals and the administration to make sure that the students that are in those instances and in that case are still taken care of and still have, and are still afforded all the opportunities. So...
I do want to be transparent here and say that we already, we already do this. If you are on the debt list, you may not be able to attend the dance.
Correct.
And it's not something that I invented. Mike Watson started when he was principal. I mean, it has been there forever, that if you want to go do an extra thing and you owe money, that one of the things that you might not be able to go and get, I know certainly, we, you know, at the high school level, homecoming and prom and parking passes at the beginning of the year, that's when people clean up the majority of their debt. And the other part to recognize is that you cannot accumulate, you can't accumulate debt in the school unless you have taken something and not returned it or damaged it. If you're free and reduced meal, you get a free meal. If you're not, there is a cost associated with what you consume. Part of this is putting in writing a lot of the things that we have historically been doing, and then to follow with a very detailed regulation so that we are always being consistent everywhere we go, from building to building and from as leaders transition to other leaders. The way this is written, the shalls are all on us. So the shalls are that the school system shall, we have to make every effort to assist families in resolving debts and payment plans and alternative options whenever. So the effort, all the onus is on the school system to shall, and the school system shall follow all laws, and to be fair, respectful and non-discriminatory. When we get to the students, it's may. So we're holding our people to the shall standard, but we're allowing there to be flexibility with, because every child is a story. Every family is its own entity. And so making sure that we're working through this. Because, Mrs. Washington, nobody would disagree that it's the extra things that we do with our children that often make the most lasting and meaningful memories and give real true sense of ownership and participation. I do feel quite confident with the people that we currently have in leadership that they understand what the two shalls mean for them, and they also understand the grace of may and finding the the, the grace of may and finding the right way to make, to hold people accountable, but also recognize that there's, there's always a lot of different factors. So, um, I know this is, I'm, I'm surprised there was no public input. There is no, there's been, I mean, it's been out there. I know that people have been, have talked about it, but, but here we are. I think that part of it is that a lot of this is already, we're already, we're already really doing it. We're just kind of putting it in an absolute concrete language.
Okay. No, I mean, I understand. I, that makes better sense distinguishing, distinguishing between the may and the shall.
Yeah, the shal- the shalls are all on us. The may is, is, the flexibility is with the, is with the students and with the parents.
Okay. Just a hard decision to make.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, anyone have anything else? All right, then may I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approved policy JFI as presented.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Oppose.
All right, motion is carried. Thank you. And?
And as, Mr. Watson, we're going to be working throughout the entire year, watching all of this and, and making sure that the regulation really aligns to exactly what is in the best practice. And we'll make sure that we bring this back and keep you informed as we go through the way in which we're actually going to land the work.
Right. And we're all about kids and we are compassionate organization, but I want to make sure that our students are not denied opportunities
Yes.
because their parents cannot afford to or will not pay the debt. It is the parent's debt, not the student's debt.
Yes. But the only way you can incur a debt is by the, the actions of the child. Not returning something or eating a lunch that they know that, that they're not covered over in free and reduced meals.
Okay, all right. Dr. Beaver, let's put a corack. Back to school.
Back to school. All right, welcome back. We're off and running. We're off and running.
Back when we had a, we had Staples and they, they would start running the ads for it's the, it's the most wonderful time of the year and the parents would be going down the, I don't know if anybody goes to Staples anymore. I guess you just order, you know, but-
You did return your Amazon packages.
Yeah. That's right. And they seem thrilled every time you drop things out there. All right. So, first and foremost, thank you to our maintenance and operations staff who were busy, busy, busy getting schools ready, uh, and preparing them for students. So some of the pics related to that, you can see, uh, there was a job fair maintenance participated in that. We have some concrete repair and some other building cleaning and prep. Uh, so thanks again to those folks for making it all happen, and they did, just like they do every single year.
Are just, they're beautiful.
Yeah.
They're beautiful.
A lot of summer work happening, uh, this summer. Uh, as you can see, uh, from the top left there, IT did their laptop refresh and did a whole lot of cabling. If you look at the picture on the bottom left, I, I, I wouldn't even know where to begin. There, that is a mountain of cabling. And then you can see Food Nutrition Services. They participate in the summer, summer meal distribution, the top pic there, and then the, the bottom pic as well. And then Transportation, having their, uh, bus driver, uh, in service, uh, at Chopticon High School. So that's a picture of that there. And then mold. Nobody wants to talk about it. But anyway, thanks again to all of our maintenance and operations staff, as well as contractors who supported the mold remediation at Hollywood and Evergreen. For the most part, it is done. We had clean air samples, which allowed students to get back into their spaces on time. The only, uh, the only remaining project really we have left is the media center at Evergreen, and they are rapidly wrapping that up as well. Uh, we did get an update today that they feel like that will be done, uh, within the next couple of weeks. Uh, so that'll be great. So, so we will be back to, back to normal at that time.
And again, if you were to go into, with the exception of Evergreen Elementary School, one half of the media's center where we had to replace a lot of the, the drywall with moisture resistant drywall. It looks, it looked incredible. It looked, it looked beautiful. I, you know, can't say enough about maintenance operations and then the staff coming back in and, and getting it all set and ready to go.
More work. So Letty Marshall Dent in Piney Point, renovations update for them. So Letty Marshall Dent, uh, on the left side, uh, they are at what we call substantial completion. So it's about ninety-five percent complete. They do have some punch work, uh, punchless work ongoing and some of the boiler work is ongoing, but they do plan to have all of that cleared out, uh, final closed out by early two thousand twenty-six. Uh, as you can see from the pictures, they had some flooring done. The gym looks amazing as well. The hallways look ama- the whole place looks amazing. If you haven't walked through Letty Marshall Dent, uh, it, it is something to be seen. Piney Point Elementary, they are also at, uh, substantial completion. They have, uh, roof, rooftop units. Uh, there's some testing and balancing going on right now relative to the HVAC. Boilers are scheduled for startup when we hit cold weather. Um, the contractor right now is cleaning up, demobilizing and working on punch lists as well. So they plan to close that out, uh, no later than early November. As you can see, they had some, some flooring done too, which looks-
Beautiful. That logo is gorgeous when you walk in.
Yeah. Other summer construction, uh, the paving project, if you haven't been over to the tech center or Lenartown High School, that looks amazing. And it's kind of funny, asphalt looking amazing, but it really does.
It does.
I mean, it's outstanding.
Pops. It pops.
It is outstanding. Um, Green Holly, uh, they had some roof work and some HVAC work done. They're at about ninety percent complete. They, uh, they have two phases, right? They're working in phase one. Phase two, uh, will be started in the summer of two thousand twenty-six, which is on the B side. So more work to come there. Um, on the Great Mills High School roof and chiller, they are also at substantial, uh, completion. Uh, they're working on a standing seam roof. That's ninety-eight percent complete. You can tell from the pictures, the skylight install is done and looks great. Um, the barrel roof replacement. Basically, they're cleaning up, removing, uh, the staging area was removed and cleaned up. New equipment is currently cooling the building. I don't know if you saw the tractor trailer out back with the temporary chiller on it. It's gone. Uh, so we are off and running. Um, they'll, again, there'll be punchless work that's being done, uh, and hope to get that done by the beginning of September, end of August. We're at the end of August, so they should be almost done. Food and Nutrition Services, uh, Summer Meals Program, they served a total of two hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred and forty-three meals this summer, which is pretty incredible. Um, Mike Watson stole my thunder. I was going to remind folks that, uh, FARM's applications needed to be submitted.
Right.
There's only a thirty day window.
Yes.
Uh, he covered that. So just a reminder, uh, to make sure you do that. Uh, CEP Schools, um, uh, Ms. Duran wanted me to, just to, to remind, uh, CEP Schools that there is no FARM's application so that you don't have to worry about that. She also wanted me to, to remind folks that CEP and community school are not synonymous.
Right.
Even though our CEP schools are community schools, all of our community schools are not CEP schools. Just to make it confusing.
Yes.
Just to make it confusing. Um, and then links, please make sure you visit the Food Nutrition Services, uh, website for all of the application information. Anything that you need relative to the menu, the school menu as well, it's all on their website. Ms. Cordicax?
Hi, everybody. Uh, this is all about materials of instruction. As you can see, the top left picture and the top right picture, that's Duke Elementary. The cafeteria and gymnasium saw over twenty thousand books come through. Um, and, and, you know, the administration at Duke wants them out by August first so that the, their building surface workers can make sure the floors are done and, and ready for when staff return. Um, but you guys remember the Read and Lead Grant that we got? Um, that came with eighteen pallets of books and other materials. Um, so we couldn't use Duke, so Food Services was nice enough to lend us their warehouse. And they were so welcoming and accommodating, they let us, well, they didn't let us. They used the forklift-
Yes.
To help Mary Pat. She's in that middle picture in the back. Like, they, they literally lifted up these pallets, moved them to where she was. She distributed. And then somehow, um, Supporting Services distributed all of these materials to schools on time. And we didn't get them till the week before. The teachers were already back.
Yep.
So that was pretty incredible. Um, and then you'll see some, um, instruments in there. And you'll remember last year, uh, there was a board meeting and we talked about the cohort schedule. Um, so now, students are able to enroll in band and strings during their instructional specials period. So there, there's not, they're not being pulled out of class. And so we ordered a whole bunch of instruments, um, to provide for students. And I, I asked Mr. Todd Burrows, the, the music supervisor, to get us the numbers of, you know, what does band enrollment look like this year versus last year? What does strings enrollment look like between the two years? And, and I would just love to share this with you. So third grade strings, we saw an increase of forty-three percent enrollment. Fourth grade, twenty-four percent. Fifth grade, forty-seven percent. More students taking band or strings. And then in band, fourth grade band increased by a hundred and eighteen percent. And fifth grade, a hundred and fifty-three percent. So many more students have instruments in their hands that are experiencing what it is to, um, play an instrument, which is great. Uh, so that's very exciting.
So as people came here and they were, they were, they were thinking that we were trying to take music away from children in schools and, and at the end of it, through the brilliance of many minds coming together, came up with really good scheduling, really good ways to not interrupt instruction and ultimately draw more children into music, you know, a hundred percent. Well, when we saw the numbers and we realized, oh my gosh, we're going to have to order a whole bunch of more instruments. And, and so it's been, certainly for Mr. Burrows, it has been a labor, but it has been a labor of love.
And we are recognized for our outstanding music and art programs nationally.
If we don't, if we don't get it this year, I don't know. We've, you know, we've, we've definitely leaned in.
Yeah, I think the last four years we've been recognized as like, yeah, best communities for music education.
Nice.
Um, we can go to the next slide. We just want to make sure that we take this opportunity to thank our community partners. Um, the Shoe Fund raised over six thousand two hundred dollars and they, they purchased two hundred and sixty-two pairs of shoes to donate to students.
Today.
Um, and, and they will use that money throughout the year as needed. Uh, and then there were hundreds of packed book bags with school supplies um, donated by, um, St. Mary's Caring, uh, NAACP, the Omega Fraternity, St. Mary's Hospital. Um, so a lot of, a lot of our students got brand new book bags and school supplies to start the new year, right?
And those are beautiful book bags. I'm telling you.
They really are.
They are all, there are several that are really swagged out.
And our employees can make donations to-
The Shoe Fund.
Uh, payroll deduction.
Directly to.
Yeah.
Doesn't take much, ten dollars a pay period or whatever can make a big difference in the life, life of a student.
Absolutely. Um, this picture, I think, is from New, New Educator Orientation.
This is new, yeah, New Teacher Orientation, New Educator, yeah, because there are also counselors and nurses and psychologists and everybody in there, but yeah.
And that just has the number of five, five counselors, one psychologist. Is that six nurses?
Six nurses.
Yep. Uh, one social worker, three speech pathologists, uh, forty support professionals and fifty-eight teachers. And six of our paras became teachers.
Teachers.
Sounds incredible.
That's fantastic.
And how many came from the TAM program?
So, as of right now, through TAM, I think we hired three people this year that came through the TAM program four years ago.
That's the Teacher Academy of Maryland, just in case people don't understand what TAM is who are listening.
Yeah.
Because we use a lot of acronyms.
Yep.
Yes, we do.
Teachers Academy at the Forest Center.
Yep.
Thank you.
Fantastic.
Uh, so here are some pictures from staff preparation. Our professional development sessions were held on August fifteenth. So this, these pictures, I think, were taken at Lenartown High School, um, which had elementary teachers and, uh, fine arts. Um, they went through content sessions. It was like a round robin, so they went fro- they got a little bit of science and social studies, ELA and math. Um, there's a fine arts session on the bottom right. On the left, it's the, uh, what is that called? The Meaningful Watershed Educational Experience.
Oh, that's where we're paying attention.
Called MEWE. Uh, it's a, it's Jason Hayes provided that to our fifth grade teachers. Um, that's part of their curriculum this year. They were very engaged. Um, I do want to shout out the Lenartown High School students that were positioned all over the building, helping teachers find their session location because they were all over and that's a confusing building. So teachers were, they just really appreciated that help.
Absolutely.
And, and I, I'm so sorry, I added a slide, but it's not up there. I, um, secondary folks were at Great Mills High School and the Great Mills students were out in the parking lot directing traffic, and that was nice.
Yep.
Um, all of the secondary teachers started together in the auditorium. Um, and we did a cahoot and they loved it. It was, it was like over like two hundred people involved in the cahoot, all focusing on tier one instruction, our core instruction, how we're going to meet students' needs. Um, and then they went out into their separate content sessions, but they were all related, like an interdisciplinary, all the supervisors planned together.
Yeah.
So it was a really great day. We got great feedback. Um, they do want food trucks so they don't have to travel far to get lunch. I think we can do that. Um, and, and climate control. So we're working on it.
Well, there, yes. There were a couple of rooms that were warm. There were a couple of rooms that were freezing cold.
There were.
So you could just go from, you could go from one to the other and, yeah.
Dressing layers.
Yeah.
Yep.
Very good. All right, familiar faces in new roles. As you know, there were very few administrative changes this year, a ton. Um, so I'm going to go through and talk about the familiar faces in new roles. I guess I'll start with me. Uh, I was the Director of Maintenance, now the Deputy Superintendent. My partner here to my right, uh, she is the new Chief Academic Officer, replacing, uh, Lisa Bachner, who you all know. She was the principal at Captain Walter Francis Duke Elementary School. And then below her, we see Donna Thorstensen. She is the Director of Accountability and Reporting, who was the principal at George Washington Carver. Then we have Jeff Dorenzo is our new, new Director of Student Services. He was the principal at Park Hall Elementary School. Then we have Charlotte Woodley. She is the Director of One, uh, Title One in Family Engagement. She was, uh, she was a director prior, but she was under that EEE umbrella, right? Equity Engagement and Equal Access. But now she is the Director of Title One in Family Engagement. Then we've got, uh, Ms. Ashley Kurtz, who's the Supervisor of Early Education and Initiatives, Curriculum and Instruction. Uh, she was an IRT, right, at George Washington Carver.
Mm-hmm.
Um, Laura Carpenter, she's Supervisor of Special Education. She was an Assistant Principal at Banneker. We have Honora Bedelka, who's the CCEIS Coordinator in Special Education. She was the principal at Ridge Elementary. Then we've got Ms. Lindsay Brenflech. She's the Supervisor in Human Resources. She was the principal at Letty Marshall Dent Elementary School. Then we've got Ryan Hanley. He's the Supervisor of PE and Athletics, uh, for the Department of Curriculum and Instruction. He was the Athletic Director at Great Mills High School. Then we have Anna Mud Morris. She is the Supervisor of Special Education. And she was, uh, she was in Special Education before. I'm trying to remember. She was-
An IEP Chair.
An IEP facilitator, right, yes. Um, Kelly Bridges, she is the Secondary ELA Curriculum and, uh, Instruction. She was an AP at Lenartown High School. Anna Fiori, who is now a Supervisor of Elementary Math. Uh, she was, uh, IRT at Lexington Park, Piney Point. She was with me at Dinerd, so, uh, she's a great catch there. And then we have Ms. Tammy McCourt, Deputy Superintendent, the Division of Supporting and Fiscal Services. So when she took over the Supporting Services umbrella, she took on that title. We have Mr. Mike Watson, who is the Chief Operating Officer for the Division of Supporting Services. He was in charge of athletics and PE prior to that and did, um, did, um, facility, what would you call it? Facility usage organization. Um, Joe Wysockinski took my position in, as the Director of Maintenance in the Department of Maintenance. He was a Supervisor in the Department of Maintenance. And then Kyle Keyball took his original role as Supervisor in the Department of Maintenance. He was a Coordinator in the Department of Operations. Then we have some new leaders to SMCPS.
Brand new people.
Brand new people.
From outside.
Uh, Mr. Phil Longo is the Coordinator, uh, in the Department of Operations, who, who took Kyle's job. And then Laura, Lauren Greifson came, came new to us. She's really not that new. She came to us early last year, but she wasn't here prior to all the beginning of year acknowledgements and all that. So she's on our slide presentation today. She is a Coordinator in the Department of Food and Nutrition Services.
But wait.
But wait, there's more.
What about the building?
There's principals. We have principals. So Mr. Scott Zerbiak is the Principal at Lexington Park. He was formerly the Principal at Banneker. Then we've got Ms. Jen Consalvo, who is now the Principal at Chopticon High School, who was the Principal at Esperanza Middle School. We have Ms. Rhonda Morgan, who is the Principal at George Washington Carver Elementary School. She was the, was she the AP or the dean? She was the dean, academic dean at George Washington Carver Elementary School. We have Ms. Wendy Zimmerman, who is the Principal at Banneker Elementary School. She's not, this is not her first principal gig. She was a Supervisor- uh, gig. She was a Supervisor in the Department of Curriculum and Instruction. We've got Chris Dyson, who's the Principal at Ridge Elementary. He was an Assistant Principal at Green Holly Elementary. We have Mark Perner, who is the Principal at the Tech Center. He was the Principal at Chopticon High School. We have Ms. Amanda Kellum, who is the Principal at Park Hall Elementary School. She was the Assistant Principal at Park Hall Elementary School. And then we have Mr. Dale, uh, Dave Chilson, who is the Principal at Esperanza Middle School. He was an Assistant Principal at, at George Washington Carver Elementary School. Then we have Ms. Kelsey Kilmire, who is the Principal at Captain Walter Francis Duke Elementary School. She was an Assistant Principal at Leonardtown High School. Then we have Mr. Joey Farrell, who is the Principal at Letty Marshall Dent Elementary School. He was the Assistant Principal at Letty Marshall Dent Elementary School. And then we have, uh, Ms. Jennifer Serber, who is the Charter Director at the Chesapeake Public Charter School, and I believe she was an IRT. Was she an IRT?
Academic Dean.
Academic Dean at the, uh, Chesapeake Public Charter School.
Yep.
Now Assistant Principal.
Yeah, sure.
Ms. Latoya Fox is now an Assistant Principal or, uh, Academic Dean at George Washington Carver. Is it Assistant Principal?
She's the Assistant Principal, yeah.
At, uh, George Washington Carver Elementary School. She was an Admin Intern at Spring Ridge Middle School. Ms. Monique Osborne, uh, is an Assistant Principal at Park Hall Elementary School, and she was a Guidance Counselor at Captain Walter Francis Duke Elementary School. Mr. Graham Coombs is an Assistant Principal at Leonardtown High School. He was a teacher at Leonardtown High School, but this is not his first administrative gig either. He has been an Assistant Principal before. Ms. Summer Wood is, uh, an Assistant Principal at Green Holly Elementary School. She was a teacher at Margaret Brent Middle School. Um, Kim Edwards, she is the Assistant Principal at Letty Marshall Dent Elementary School. She was the IRT there. Mr. Matt Rodriguez is an Assistant Principal at Banneker Elementary School. He was the Administrative Intern at Chopticon High School. Mr. Christopher Adams, who's the Assistant Principal at, um, Chopticon High School, was an Assistant, or was a...
IRT.
He was an IRT at Esperanza. Ms. Hattie Webb, uh, is an Assistant Principal at Great Mills High School. She was a math coach at Great Mills High School. Kayla Verbic was already an Assistant Principal. She was at Leonardtown Elementary. She is now at Dinerd. And Ms. Ashley Gallo was at Dinerd, who is now at Leonardtown Elementary. Uh, and Ms. Vernetta Smith, who was an Assistant Principal at Chopticon High School, is now an Assistant Principal at Leonardtown High School. We're almost there.
So close.
And then we have our Academic Deans. Ms. Courtney DeVorek, who is a Supervisor in Curriculum and Instruction. She is now the Academic Dean at George Washington Carver Elementary. We have Ms. Lisa Dean, who was a Supervisor in Special Education, who is now an Academic Dean at Park Hall Elementary School. And then we have Mr. Richard Carey at Chesapeake Public Charter School. He's an Academic Dean, and he was a physical education teacher. And that is forty-four administrative changes.
You would assume, with that many changes, that it would be a tumultuous start, where we were running around, and people were panicked, and nobody really knew, and, yeah, uh, the, the, the depth of talent in the system, and as you see, people rise, and you see people shift. Come to Central Office, work for a while, really enjoy it, learn, and then go back into the, into the buildings to, to lead. Uh, it's, it's really, it's been an, it's been an amazingly busy time, and just thank you certainly to Dr. Beavers and to Katie and Ms. Quartercracks for, um, marshaling all of this as well, bringing others on as, as we went. It's been great.
And this is from our new leaders training. This is a group picture of all the new leaders that, that, uh, at the new leaders training. We had a wonderful, look at all those smiles. It was that good. It was that good.
Well, in your past, they, they just met in Dr. Montgomery's office and sat around their little table. There were like five of them.
Wasn't enough room. There was not enough room.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then, first day of school. So, all schools submitted some back-to-school, first-day-of-school pictures. Um, I'm not gonna read and go through every picture with you, but you can see here, a lot of smiling faces on the first day of school. A lot of the senior sunrise pics in, in this particular, uh, this particular slide. You see Western, it was a Western theme at Banneker.
Yeah, they've gone through, yeah, that's, that's, boots and, boots and hats. It's gonna be a fun year. It's gonna be a fun year.
Yep. More first-day pics. I've got these labeled, if it wasn't obvious who they were. Uh, again, more, more smiling faces, first day of school, lots of first-day-of-school, first-day of first grade, first-day-of-kindergarten shirts and all that.
Oh, yeah.
Um, again, the senior, senior sunrise for Great Mills at the bottom there. Mr., Mr. Dyson and his staff selfie.
Yeah, basically, got, pretty much got them all in there.
He got them all there. He got them all there all the, on the front.
That's a great school, yeah. All of them coming in.
Lexington Park staff picture out front.
Oh, we're pretty much putting everybody in. That's great.
Yep. And then, we asked the public to send their first-day-of-school pics through Facebook, and they answered the call. We got tons, tons of first-day-of-school pics.
Oh, my gosh.
I got them all in all of these slides. More and more smiling faces. I gotta point out, I have to point out the Buc-Ee's sweatshirt.
Yeah.
With a last name like mine, you have to point out the Buc-Ee's.
Buc-Ee's, yeah.
The Buc-Ee's sweatshirt. If you wanna spend two-hundred bucks on your way to somewhere, stop at Buc-Ee's.
Yeah. You never know what you need until you're there, and then you need pretty much everything.
Until you get the Buc-Ee's.
Yeah.
There we go. Some in front of the, some, some pictures taken right there on the new dolphin at Letty Marshall.
Yeah, look at that.
Look at that.
Right on the logo.
They just kept sending them. More first-day. I do wanna see, next year, we should ask parents to send first-day pics of them. I would love to see, I would love to see those pictures.
Last-day pictures.
And there we go.
Yeah.
So, they definitely answered the call. We got tons of participation in that, in that picture campaign.
It was, it was certainly a joyous, you know, visiting Facebook and seeing all of that, kinda sets you, sets you right, recognizes that there are many, many things that are going right in the world.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, this is just a reminder that any question that you may have, or if you're looking for a resource, a good landing page is smcps.org. A lot, I've gotten, like, lots of questions as an Assistant Principal, as a principal, and even in my new position, people calling, like, "I lost my hair. I don't know my hack password." And I'm like, "Oh," and I just go to smcps.org, and then I click on, is it Students and Family, that tab, and then I just go through it with them, cause I, I can't tell them off the top of my head, but it, it's a very easily navigatable, um, website. So, I would start there if you ever have a question or need a resource.
And you wanna find out about redistricting, it's right there.
Oh, yeah.
Backslash redistricting.
And they're, you know, School G lunch menus, it's all there.
It's all there. It's all there.
Yep. And then just be on the lookout for communication from your students' principals. Um, they're sending emails. If you've signed up, uh, you can also get text messages from them. Um, their School G pages are being updated, and then, of course, the weekly update from principals, um, also has basically everything that you're gonna need for the week and beyond.
Yeah.
And if you've been, uh, with SMCPS, you know that attendance matters. Um, just an FYI, uh, MSDE, that, they consider chronically absent to be absent ten percent of the school year. So, the school's, your, school year is a hundred-and-eighty days. That means eighteen days or more you're considered chronically absent, which is about two days per month. Um, we can't teach students if they're not in the seats, so we really just wanna make sure that everyone is hearing the message, please send your kids to school. We, we want to teach them. Uh, there is going to be an Attendance Spirit Week this month. I, I think it's, yeah, September is Attendance Awareness Month. So, I think it starts September fifteenth. Um, and that, I already, I've seen those flyers in principals' weekly messages already.
Yep.
Yep, so just be on the lookout and be ready to, um, dress for success.
Just keep in mind, so if you work on base, and you have a compressed work week, and every, every other Friday off, if you take your child out of school, your child is chronically absent and put on the list for St. Mary's County Public Schools, and we get, we get penalized for that. Just to give you an idea of what that, how quickly that adds up.
Yeah, it hurts the, the Maryland School Report Card.
Right.
For each school. It, attendance plays a big role in that.
Yep.
And just a quick shout-out, uh, Ms. Chamberlain from George Washington Carver Elementary. Her class earned pants already, and pants stands for present and no tardies. So, at the end of every week, um, a, a class, a homeroom, that everyone was there every day, and they were not tardy. They get little, like, paper pants, and I think they, like, hang them up.
They're, they get, they get to choose. Yeah, I took that picture today. They get to choose. There are several different versions of the, and you can't really see, I should've zoomed in, but she is holding the pants, and they're sparkly different colors. And then, once you've earned your major pants award, you pick the pants you want, and then it's put on a clipboard outside the, outside of your classroom, so that all of your friends across the school know that you are pants.
Her hair. Yeah. Here and ready to learn.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. All right. Our next board meeting, Wednesday, September tenth.
Just Jeff.
Executive Session at eight. We're meeting at nine. Thank you, everyone. With that, we are adjourned.
We have a work session?
Well, Mr. Dorenzo hopes that this is very, very quick. It should be. Should be very straightforward.
Okay.
You're the best. Thank you. Yep.
Yep.
Okay, there we go. So, this is, um, well, first of all, let me apologize. Tammy Metcalf, our Director of Health Services, was not able to make it. She had a, uh, unexpected family, um, obligation come up. But, um, this is the first reading for Administration of Medication to Students, which is policy JHCD. And so, the whole purpose of this is to basically clean up some of the language and update it with the new laws that are required of our, um, nurses and health centers. So, the policy was originally adopted June fifth of nineteen-ninety, and last updated November thirteenth of twenty-thirteen. The revision of references, um, are to include applicable articles of the Annotated Code of Maryland to cover all required stock medications, and the addition of parent and legal guardian notification statement. And so, the purple is obviously, uh, items that we are removing or proposing to remove, and the red are the articles that we are looking to add. Um, based on the Maryland law, educational articles, there were two of those, uh, symbols. We'd like to remove one of them, and the...
You only need the one, yeah.
The, the red numbers, so, sorry, let me back up. SB four-five-five, um, no one is able to cite what that law actually is, and so, when you do your research and you look back, twenty-thirteen was the last update, there was a SB four-four-five that never went to fruition.
Right.
And so, we'd like to remove that and replace it with the, um, red numbers that I'm not gonna try to read right now.
Seven-four-two.
We got you.
Those are the... Okay, and, um, but I did go ahead and put those in here. This would not be in the policy, this little section, but just for our own reference of what those are. And so, it would be like the, um, anaphylactic allergy, the EpiPens, that all nursing, all schools have in their nurse's office. Um, it would be epinephrine's. It would, it would be, um, Administration of Medication for, for students that are diabetic. Um, Nox, Nox...
Naloxone.
Naloxone, um, which would be for opioid overdoses. And then, the newest law that came into fruition was for the bronchodilators, which are albuterol inhalers, uh, for asthmatic episodes. Okay? And so, the purpose of the policy is to establish procedures for the safe administration of medications to students during the school day. This part of the policy statement, we, we didn't deem to need any updating, and, um, I can go through that real quick. The health of the child is a...
We're good. We're good, Jeff.
We're good?
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah. We're, if we're not changing and adding to it, let's, we'll, we'll be...
All right, so, this is the, the red portion is the part that we're looking to add. This is currently in our, uh, regulations for medication, and it is the parents or legal guardians of a student are notified at the start of each school year about the administration of medications to students, the avail, availability of stock emergency medications and related proc, procedures. This information is communicated through the St. Mary's County Public Schools' Student Handbook. And so, that part was already in our regulations. That was something we've been doing all along for the twenty years that I've been here, and now we'd like to just include it in the policy that will, um, meet the law, the legal requirements. Uh, we weren't changing any of the definitions, and, um, so that is the first reading. That's that.
Perfect.
Yeah, we referenced, we referenced something that wasn't a law, and, uh, yes, and now we have it actually referencing...
All the, all the right stuff.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Yep. Absolutely. Any questions?
No.
I don't have any.
We just wanna save people's lives if, if we need to.
Totally right.
That's all I wanna do.
Always important. Always important. All right, that's...
With that.
Finished the work session. They're done.
All right.